For the April 11th Village Board Meeting, would you please stand and join in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Shaughnessy?
Here.
Snagowski?
Here.
Stapleton?
Here.
Kittredge?
Yes, oh, here.
Maher?
Here.
McLaferde's absent.
Okay, all right, first up, we have the consent agenda, which consists of the following items. We have the approval of minutes from the Village Board Minutes from February 28th. We have the Village Board Minutes from March 14th meeting. In addition, we have approval of dispersments from 3-15 through April, I'm sorry, from March 15th through April 11th, 2022. We also have an ordinance O-15-22 amending Title 13 of the Lamont, Illinois municipal code relating to public utilities water. We have an ordinance O-16-22 amending the ordinance 725, establishing a pay plan and schedule of authorized positions. We have an ordinance O-17-22 amending Section 9.20.060 for video gaming permitted of the village code of the village of Lamont. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Snagowski, seconded by trustee Maher to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments by any of the trustees on any of the items? Roll call, please.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Moving along here, we have the mayor's report. First off, we have a public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 proposed annual operating budget. Need a motion to open the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Stapleton, seconded by trustee Kittredge at 6:42 PM. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion is passed to open up the hearing. Chris, you want to take this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the second of our public hearings for the fiscal year 23, which starts May 1st of 2022 and ends of April 30th next year of 2023. Like I said, this is the second. We are only required by state statute to have one public hearing. However, we like to have two for transparencies, and we also put the notices in two different papers. So last time, we put it in the, in the local one that was here, and then this one, we took it, we put it in the local Tribune. And we've had the budget online since the beginning of March. It has not changed. It's $33.5 million. We did put the public hearing in, rounded up to $34 million. However, this, we haven't changed anything. The budget's been online, and this is just standard practice. This is the next step.
Thanks, Chris. Again, thank you for all your hard work, as well as your staff's on the budget. Any other questions or comments for Chris? All right, so therefore, George, I see you grabbing your microphone there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time of the meeting for the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak, come up to the podium. There will be time later on in the meeting for general topics to address the board. This is just for the budget public hearing. Anybody? Nothing other than the lake out on McCarthy Road in front of Fifth Street, right, Jerry?
No.
All right, good. We appreciate that.
I'll make a motion, close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Snagowski, seconded by trustee Shaughnessy, to close the public hearing. My watch is a little bit fast, so I guess it wasn't 6:42 originally.
6:37.
I think it was 6:34 originally, 6:37 now, so to close the, the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion is passed. Next up, we have the appointment of two commission members. I need a motion to appoint two commission members, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Kittredge, seconded by trustee Maher to approve the appointment of Jenna Malero to the Lamont Environmental Advisory Commission and Jason Stood to the Heritage Quarter Outdoor Recreation Commission, each for a two-year term. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion is passed, and we wish Jenna and Jason good luck, and we thank them for their services to our commissions. Next up, we have the clerk's report, Linda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have ordinance O-1822 adopting the fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual operating and capital improvement budget for the village of Lamont.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Snagowski, seconded by trustee Shaughnessy. Chris, you going to take this one?
Yes, yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is the ordinance adopting the fiscal year 22, 23 annual operating budget and capital improvement budget. We began this process in 2021 November. It's been a long process, but we've been working with, with the department heads, with staff, with the board. We actually, the board approved the five-year capital plan in February. We had financial updates. This is the last step for the board approval. Once the board approves this ordinance, we will be filing them with the counties and also with the GFOA for our award.
Thanks, Chris.
And once again, it's $33.5 million. We have not made any changes since we've discussed the budget with, with.
And again, that overlaps years. It starts May 1st, correct?
It starts May 1st, yes. And it includes all the capital as well, so it includes, that's why the, the capital plan is in there as well. And it's around $8 million is the capital plan, because we have our water tower in there.
Got it. So May 1st through April 30th of 2023. Any other questions for Chris? Roll call, please.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
All right, motion passed.
We have a fiscal year 2023 fee ordinance O-1922.
Okay, need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Snagowski, seconded by trustee Kittredge. Chris, you taking this as well?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the last committee of the whole meeting, we discussed the fee ordinances and some changes. It was noted that the movie permit fees did not mirror what our police, how much we charge per hour for the police, and then also the right-of-way. So we mirrored that, so we changed that, and we changed the application as well. We did discuss for a while now reducing the vehicle sticker late fee from 50 to 10. And then we did discuss, we historically have increased the water rates 3% starting October, but we wanted to mirror our fiscal year, so we decided May 1st, and we are going to increase it by 4%. And then the sewer rate hasn't been increased since 2018, so we were going to increase that. We did some cost one through all the, the water analysis we were doing. We have done a cost analysis on the sewer, and it was noted that we, with the $30, we were not covering our costs. So that's why we upped it to $40. This is bimonthly, so it's every other month.
And Chris, was there, I think, as part of all this, again, we talked about this at length in prior meetings, you know, we've looked at other water rates, to, you know, neighboring towns, to quite a few towns. I think by far, we are still the lowest, is that correct, George?
Yeah.
Yes, we are the lowest, and we also are the one that give the highest senior discount. Other communities do give discounts, but they usually cap it. We do not cap it, and we do 50%. So we do, we have the highest reduction for seniors.
And of course, we're always conscious of, of the rates. We want to keep things as low as possible, but again, we have to be able to cover our costs. And more importantly, we had a well go down this year. And of course, with the COVID inflation or whatever it's attributed to, we have significant costs going up just to put in a new tower, as well as eventually a new well as well.
Yeah.
And again, you know, 4%, it goes up, but it's still below inflation. We still need to continue to monitor, you know, our raises, because we have to make sure. Again, our water department does not make money. It is not a profit center. We break even, whatever we collect, it goes back into the water system. We probably need to be more, I don't want to use the word proactive, because we are very proactive, but from a money standpoint, we need to start making sure that we're collecting to make sure that our infrastructure stays up to par. So this is part of that, and we'll continue to monitor that.
Yeah, and as part of our comprehensive analysis, and we've, we've met multiple times in December, January, February, looking at water supply options, but looking at our own system, regardless of option moving forward, whether it be remaining with our wells, one day migrating to Lake Michigan water through multiple providers, there will be costs associated with our system, obviously, and projecting out. We looked at, at a bare minimum to remain with our wells by 2030. We're going to have to get to a water rate that's going to be able to fund those improvements that will require us to increase rates 4% a year. If we were to migrate to Lake Michigan, that number's going to go up likely to 7% per year. Right now, to be safe, 4% this year. And then next year, which is important as part of the analysis and the discussion we've had with the IDNR relating to water allocations from Lake Michigan, but generally, best practices is that our rate structure is going to change. It's a lot of change in one year, so we're going to push that out to next May, correct, Chris? This year, you're going to see the 4% increase. Next year, there will be a rate change, you know, and there will, we'll have to play out scenarios so people fully understand it. But it gives us a year to, to build in for that, and that's just to make sure that our rates are, the, the, the method to collecting or, to calculating our rates is consistent with everyone else in Chicagoland. Right now, we do things very differently. So next May, you'll see a rate structure change. This year, you will see a rate increase, change of 4% versus the typical 3%. And we will put out a flyer with our next water bill, correct, Chris?
Correct.
I was just going to ask that. Has HCR put out any summary with the figures you just, the information you just gave out? We have some kind of summary posted, or we?
Yeah, we'll.
What are we doing?
We'll put out a summary with the water bill. The structure change, that'll come next year. We are going to, in the next few months, we're going to engage a consultant, or more than likely, HR Green. They worked with our other, in other studies, to, to convert it to a full rate study, so, so they get an extra set of eyes on it. So we're going to send out a flyer with the water bills that explains their increases. But next year, when we do the rate structure, we'll have to prepare for that with a public information campaign, because it will be different. You know, there will be some based on how much you used water. The senior rate may change, but your, the way we do your minimum amount of water you must take, it might change. So we just got to go through that, and we'll have plenty of time the upcoming year, correct, Chris?
Yes.
George, if we do get an allocation for Lake Michigan water, how long is that good for?
I think you have to reapply every, what, you have to keep it current every three years, Chris?
Yeah, I, I thought every five to 10. We'll have to look at it, because they've changed it.
Yeah.
But the allocation, when we are submitting right now, it's to begin only in 2030. So then in, then for sure, in 2030, we'll have to, we'll, we'll, you know, have it. But I, I believe it's, they, they've changed the criteria that you have to just kind of resubmit like your numbers, because right now, we have to submit all the costs, all the revenues, all the, how many meters, how many customers, what our population projections are. So we'll have to true it up.
Are there any questions about how much leakage we have?
Yes, uh huh. There's a whole analysis on there. We mirrored our billing system with what the water department had. And then, and there's this whole, there's a whole water audit we had to do. It's a 100-page report right now, without the backup.
Yes, we have our hearing in front of the DNR in May.
Yes.
We'll post all that information publicly as well. And then, just because we are securing an allocation and we're hopeful to get it, I'm sure we will. It doesn't mean we're migrating to that source, it just gives us an option for the future. And, and we could continue to renew it every three to five years, whether we choose to go to Lake Michigan or not. So, good to have.
Yes.
And just to piggyback off that, again, we have our own deep wa, you know, deep water wells over 1,500 feet. Water quality arguably better than, than Lake Michigan from a treatment standpoint. Cost is definitely cheaper, as we well know, and, and we will, we can share those reports if need be. And again, this is basically a backup, or eventually something we go to, you know, potentially decades down the road. Unlike Joliet, we've had, you know, our experts look at the water supply of our wells, the aquifer. I think they gave us, what, several decades, was that the latest? But again, we continue to monitor it, you know, every five years, it got brought up with Joliet, because, you know, they're running out. They have to make a switch by 2030. We do not. We, according to the last report, we have 50, 60, 70 years. Again, we'll continue to monitor it if anything changes. We'll have, you know, always at least a five-to-10-year, you know, advance. But again, we're just doing our homework and making sure we have a backup if need be, so. That being said, any other questions, comments? All right, roll call, please.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Ordinance O-2022 authorizing the acquisition of property located at the southwest corner of Illinois Route 83 in Bell Road from the county of Cook.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Stapleton, seconded by trustee Maher. George, are you taking this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The village has been working with the Illinois Department of Transportation and Cook County Highway Department for the last several months, clearing up several real estate encumbrances out at Route 83 in Maine. This is the village-owned site, approximately 16 acres. We've entered into an agreement with Bluestone to develop that site for us. What's been holding up, the redevelopment agreement, subdivision, and the ultimate development, has been these real estate issues. And they're, they're all individually generally fairly minor, they just take time to, to research. We've resolved all the issues with IDOT. You guys passed a jurisdictional transfer late last year. There was one, about 1,700 square feet of property within that area where we took jurisdiction over it that was owned by Cook County, and that goes back to the 1920s, when Old Bell, or Bell Road, or Old Archer was actually owned by the county. And when they transferred to IDOT, that parcel remained. So we had to work with Cook County in conjunction with IDOT to figure all that out. And before you hear tonight is the, the next step in that process, and one of the final steps, is to authorize the village to acquire that property at appraised value. The county has signed off. This will be second from last step. They have to take then the item to the asset management committee at the county board level, and then they will approve it in May or June. They're projecting a closing in, in June. Can't say enough how much we thank you to the Cook County officials, at the highway department, the county board for taking the issue up. It's minor, but the amount of hours put into it by attorneys and engineers and highway department officials, when obviously, the county has other, other things to do, as, as do we. We do appreciate their hard work. We're getting to the end. Once these issues are cleared up, and probably within the next month or two, right, Jason? We're going to be bringing back the redevelopment agreement for Bluestone, and we might be able to start that project this year. So just want to say thank you to the county again, and $5,300 for the property. So I think that's a pretty good deal, and we'll, if you guys approve it, we'll send it into the county for them to finish up their process.
Yeah, awesome. Yeah, you know, ditto what George said. I want to thank the county for assisting in getting this done. It's, it seems minor, but it basically, it's kind of been one of the roadblocks in getting this done for the last two years. So this seems to be the last hurdle. So looking forward to moving on with this property, and, you know, again, want to thank them. Any other questions, comments regarding this? Roll call, please.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
All right, motion passed.
Resolution R-1122, approving additional professional services agreement between HR Green Incorporated and the village of Lamont, Illinois, Lake Michigan water permit application.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by trustee Maher, seconded by trustee Snagowski. George, are you taking this?
Actually, Chris.
Oh, Chris.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed before, this is a resolution for HR Green to assist us with the Lake Michigan water permit application. This basically is just time, they, it's not a flat rate. They've been just charging us based on a per-hour rate. It's not to exceed. We've been doing a lot, a lot of stuff in-house, however, putting the whole report together, I said it's over 100 pages with all the backup and everything. So they're coordinating with us. So this is basically just our agreement with them to assist us with this.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I learned a lot.
All right, roll call, please.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
All right, motion approved.
And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Linda. All right, next up, village attorney report. Mike, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't, but thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. George, administrator report.
Nothing for open session, I'll have a couple items on our executive session.
Any staff reports? Chief?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we get late into income tax season, each year, it seems there's different types of fraud that pop up. This year, as we get close to the end, we're getting a lot of calls on fraudulent income tax forms that have been filed on individuals' social security numbers. So this year, what, what that appears is, as you file, they're getting notices that there's already an income tax report that's been filed on that, on that form. Typically, the obvious reason is because they're filing with false W-2s to get a fraudulent income tax return, but also because so many of the new cryptocurrency sites, the stock trading sites are requiring an income verification, and they're using these fraudulent returns to create a false income verification. Or they're going on sites like eBay to sell goods, and they're generating incorrect or fraudulent 1099s that are then sent to the, the legitimate owners of those social security numbers, where they're then able to avoid paying taxes on the income generated. So if you do get one of these notices from the IRS, there is a form you can fill out. It's Form 14039. It'll, a link will be on our website to file that form and then complete a paper return. But also, call us and file a police report that you could then use to notify, for instance, eBay that somebody stole your social security number and filed a false report. And, and some additional things like putting a freeze on your credit accounts and notifying to do some checks on your credit reports and account statements. The IRS now also offers a, an e-file PIN for tax filing. That's a, probably a good thing if you do e-filing, to get that PIN. And every year, there's something new, but, you know, it's good to keep a, an eye on your, on your credit just to make sure all these fraudulent activities don't occur.
Thanks, chief. All right, any other staff reports? All right, new business, unfinished business. George, anything?
I do not have any.
All right, you want to take audience participation?
So this is the opportunity, the meeting for audience participation. We have not received any letters or emails prior to the meeting, but we have an opportunity now. Our ordinance outlines the rules for public speaking, three minutes per speaker, and clearly states your name. So I'll call anybody up for public participation. Go ahead, Jeanette, if you can walk in.
Are all these right?
Yes. Yep, those are right.
Okay.
Oh, right there. I moved, I moved it around on you, I'm keeping you on your toes.
Yeah, okay. Jeanette DeBarris, 13490 Derby Road, Lamont. I just didn't understand why you needed the property at Route 83 in Bell. And what is it, how much are you purchasing? Are you purchasing it?
Yes, 1,700 square feet, and the appraised value was for $5,300.
Okay, and what is it going to be used for?
It'll be included with our development at the corner. It'll, it'll actually be, lines up where the entrance along Archer Avenue is. So it'll be used for, in conjunction with the village's development at that corner.
What is the development?
We've had many meetings, but this is the fuel station. It's also a retail complex and light industrial.
How many acres, George?
So.
16 acres total.
A gas, gas station, is it?
Yes.
Okay, and so is it going to be on 1,700 square feet, or is that?
That's just part of the development, Jeanette. You know, when we go to subdivide the property, we can't sell property we don't own. So we're just trying to bring it into the village so that we can include it in a larger development.
Okay, and, and what is the total parcel that this development is going to be on?
16, 16 acres.
16 acres?
Correct.
We're a gas station, huh?
Yeah, gas station, also retail, and a light industrial.
Okay, we don't know what the retail is yet?
No, it, we can, probably the next meeting, we'll, we'll discuss. It'll be a retail complex of some sort. Again, we're, before we can even enter into those negotiations, we had to own the property, so.
Okay, and the other thing is, I just wanted to express my. Okay, and the other thing is, I just wanted to express my disappointment in the subdivision with the 409 homes on it, I don't know where it's at now, I don't know whether it's been approved or what, but I just don't think that in that area, that that is the type of development that you want, with the combination of duplexes and single-family homes, I believe if you're going to go, you should go single-family homes on a little bit larger lots, you are really in an area where the developments that are there are going to be impacted by this development, and those are, you know, places like the Equestrian Estates, which has two, three acre lots in it, and the other developments that are in that area, it's usually been single-family homes, except for the one that Lamont approved, and in the area for the 39 duplex homes that are going to be going up there, enough of the duplex homes already, I don't think we need them, I don't think they add to the village, I know everybody says, well, it's only people that are 55 and older, well, 55 and older people are still possibly not going to be just 55 years and older, and I think with these developments, you're looking at having to have a new high school, and a new elementary school, and if that's the case, you know, who's going to, who's going to pay for that? Is the rest, we all pay for those schools, and I think that that is a mistake in that development, that's my opinion, I believe that you could have found a better developer to do that, and that's what I want to say.
Thanks, Jeanette.
Thanks, Jeanette.
How many acres is that on, the entire site, is it 100?
100 and.
Like 194, 200.
Yeah, 194.
Something like that.
194 acres total?
Correct.
With over 100 duplexes.
So it's like, one, one unit per, or two units per acre?
Correct.
Yeah. All right, anything else, George?
Nope, nothing further, Jerry?
All right, so next up, we have executive session, need a motion to go into executive session to discuss under chapter 5 ILCS of the Open Meetings Act 120, 2C6- Real Estate Setting Price for Sale, as well as 2C1 Personnel Employment Compensation, nothing else, correct, George?
That is it.
All right, need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Stapleton, seconded by trustee Maher to move into executive session, can we have a roll call, please?
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Snogowski.
Yes.
Stapleton.
Yes.
Kittredge.
Yes.
Maher.
Yes.
All right, motion passed, that ends the first part of our public meeting, there will be no decisions made after our executive session, but of course, we will adjourn the meeting after that time, so again, want to thank everyone for, for coming out, and wish everyone a great week and happy Easter.
Thank you.